All right, call the meeting to order, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Malinsky, trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Mayor Petrich.
Here.
I think I stuttered on.
Approval of the minutes from the July thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And a second, a second. Right, any corrections, discussions? Page four. Page four. The name at the top, is it a four back?
But that's what Mike put in his report.
I think it's T.
I thought it was four back then, but maybe it's not.
I just copied what Mike put in his report, but it should be four back.
Well, you thought it was just a T?
No, I thought it was four back. I thought it was, I don't know.
Oh, T H.
I thought it was T.
T H, so it feels?
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Just like to officially congratulate Mary on these minutes because this was a really, really involved meeting. So, thank you for doing such a great job with all this information. So important when we go back over and look for different bits of information. So, no other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And a special board meeting on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty, motion? No, no motion. And a second?
Call a second.
All right, any corrections on this? Special board meeting?
No.
No.
Any other?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed. Anyone abstention? Motion carries. We have the report from the codes enforcement officer. Mike gave that to us. It's been pretty busy, I would say. If anyone has any questions or needs clarification? Does seem to often be the same property, so you're probably familiar with it. All right. Report from the mayor. Good evening, friends and neighbors. One of the most common complaints that I get almost nightly is the use of fireworks in the village. Residents are justifiably upset when the loud noises scare their pets and awaken children. These devices that fly in the air are illegal. Law enforcement has been contacted and request that those of you who are setting these off, stop. I understand that we are all stressed and restless, but the fireworks are causing more stress for many members of the community. Please be respectful and cease this activity. I'm sure you are all aware that we continue to have a few water main breaks in the village, which results, which results in long hours of work to repair and requires boil water notices to be posted until we can get a clean report from the health department. We are working on solving this problem. We are actively pursuing grants and loans to replace the most troublesome pipes. This will be a long process, and I ask you for your patience. I will continue to update you as we move forward in this project. I encourage all of you to participate in some of the weekly activities that we are having in the village. The farmer's market is being held every Saturday from nine until noon. There are several vendors selling produce, maple products, baked goods, cheese, crafts, and even trees. This is a perfect opportunity to support your local small businesses. Also, a community kayak outing is taking place, leaving from the River Street Boat Launch on the Great Chazy every Wednesday or Thursday at five P M. Details are posted on the Champlain on the Move Facebook page. In addition, don't forget to take a walk along the Northern Two Rec Trail. It is a beautiful, safe path connecting Champlain to Ross's Point. Finally, I thank you for wearing a mask when distancing is not possible. In the village office, in our stores and other businesses, I see nearly everyone behaving responsibly by using a mask. This is a critical tool which will reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. May you enjoy the remainder of the summer, stay healthy, and remember to take care of one another. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Nikki?
Um, we have one fun run left. I have two families that are actively participating, so it's five kids total.
Good, good.
Yeah. Um, I have car decals ordered for them, just, you know, something small. You know. That's weird. And the other announcement I have is that the library is now open eleven thirty to five thirty, back to the regular hours on Tuesday and Wednesday. And Saturdays, ten to one. They still require a mask, and they only want you walking in the doorway, so if you have a request, let them know, if possible, ahead of time by phone or email or Facebook messaging them. The interlibrary loan is available now, so you can order your books from other libraries to be picked up at Champlain. And they're discussing starting story hour up again. By going at a little distance, they were thinking about putting little hoops out six feet apart, so the kids have their own spot to sit in. So hopefully we can get that going. And they also were discussing possible Halloween event, pumpkin, pumpkin party contest, where things are just left there, you know, what has to be concrete, you know? That's something to bring the community together. We also have the spring raffle that was supposed to have been finished during our library prom back in June, which wasn't held, so they're extending that, so if anyone is interested in buying raffle tickets to see Alison at the library during the open hours, she'll get that to you.
So, can you, can you walk among the stacks to pick out a book, or do you have to, like, pre-order it?
I don't believe you can walk around in the library yet, but you can go in the doorway. She does have a table there, and she's right there, so discuss with Alison in the library, and she can help you with that.
Great, great, that's nice.
Yeah, their, their guidance has been, well, I think they're not sure if they should fully open, or you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Doesn't really specify in the state how libraries are.
Hmm.
Okay.
Anything else?
That is it.
Tom?
Okay. As everyone has hopefully seen, and hopefully some of you, the kayak launch and dock system is in. So first and foremost, I want to thank Clark Kerbit for his assistance in assembling the dock and the launch, I appreciate the help. And thank you to the crew and John Trombley for their assistance in cleaning the dock in the water and installing that awesome gangway in place. So hopefully this is nice. Does anybody have feedback as far as the use of it?
I've used it. A few of us have used it. We, it's beautiful. There are a couple of concerns that I want to talk with you about.
Okay.
At some point when we're standing there to see if we can add an additional railing of some sort.
We had talked about that when we first ordered it.
I knew, yeah, I knew that we had. So that, that's my only concern, is it's, it's, it's a little bit difficult, because you don't have something to hold on to on that, that far side.
Okay.
So, I can talk about it later, but it's, I mean, it is, it's gorgeous.
All right, so we'll meet then.
Yeah, we need to meet down there, I need to explain the, I have some safety concerns about it.
Okay. And then a little quick report on the water board, we have most of our data in, we're still meeting on a couple of things. Want to either get anywhere closer with those, or?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I can look at it in the drawer, I need to take it out.
We're meeting again on the, on the twenty fourth.
Mm-hmm.
If they're able to give it to us before then, that'd be great. We're trying to, you know, complete our report by the end of September, so we're hoping to get all of it in. I mean, currently, I know that one member is working on evaluating the cost of water. I'll be working with Joe Ashline in the next week or so to complete his E D U assessment and have that report finalized. And that's about where we're at, so moving forward. And then one other thing I have is I have a blood drive on August thirty first from three to seven at EMS station number one, which is on Route eleven in Champlain. So, to all who may be watching, please come donate.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
All right, yes, Tom. Kim?
Um, just a couple more comments on the, on the boat launch. Thanks to everyone who helped with storing the unit and the crew for helping put it in, the contractors that came and did the cement work. But first and foremost, to my husband and fellow trustee, this would not have been accomplished without his many hours of emails, phone calls, technical assistance, because I have no clue on any of this stuff, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think the launch would have happened without that.
Well, I know Tom didn't put a lot into it, but she, but she both did, so really, I, you know, I thank both of you. It's really a unique feature of your.
Well, say it was both, it wasn't just me?
I'm glad it's done.
I'm sure you are.
Sounds like we have an adjustment to make.
Well, we'll just, we'll, we'll figure that out, we can figure that out. Uh, report from the clerk treasurer, looks like we have a transfer.
Yeah, well, everyone has their expense and revenue reports for July. Of course, it's just the beginning of our.
Right. Were there any questions on the expense and revenue report?
Okay, now, the one transfer, the cost of that study for the water, the whole total is sixteen thousand five hundred. I recommended doing, transferring that whole amount, because we're going to end up expending it. Because we just got to build, um, expending some of it. What's that?
Is it nearly seven hundred?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So I recommend transferring from the fund balance sixteen thousand five hundred to F fourteen forty point one engineering, sixteen thousand five hundred.
I have a motion for that, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Other discussion on this transfer? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley. Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
And then the warrant.
And now the warrant. We have additional invoices to be added of two thousand five hundred and seventy-three forty-five for a total warrant of twenty-eight thousand four thirty-five thirty-three.
I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices for a total of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
So a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
See, we got the backhoe fixed, and it was relatively, I thought the pressure's good. Still, it's still a leak on it, another one different, and you had like in the upper room, but not inside. Yeah. Oh, really? Yeah, this is a hose of glue in the lower boob. I don't know, we gotta take it for again? Not yet, it's dripping, but it's not, it's still using it, can't stop right now. Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
Report from the superintendent.
I need to do it for mostly, uh, Ben Streets. They should know, Wednesday, maybe by the end of the week, we'll be paving. Working on still, about three hundred feet of culvert to go in. Working on manholes, we've got an odd size, or manhole, sewer manholes are odd size, so having trouble getting riser boots. But we're going to keep going on, more will be backup prospect if it doesn't rain. We just moved the mailboxes back, we're trying to, we're trying to widen that road, so. I know they're moving, I think, to Ross's Point tomorrow, the paving crew, they've got, I think, a couple days there, and then they're gonna, they don't have all their streets ready, so they're going to see if they can get the ones they have done. South Street, Receiver Way, and probably we're going to see if we can at least get binder on Prospect anyway. And then we're working on having them come back in September, because they're going to have to come back and finish Ross's Point, so. That's the plan, now I'll know more come Wednesday, it's supposed to come, depends if it's under rain, I don't want to get rained tomorrow, I think it's going to be later in the afternoon, so. But, it's coming quick, so.
So, that'll give you a little time then from the binder to the phinoscope?
Yeah, because we're gonna, because we want to widen it, I think they're gonna put binder on, it's, road's so bad anyways, it needs to be shimded a lot. Usually use the same material to shim it and to top it, but it's, there's enough glue from the trucks, and just over time, I think we're going to use binder, because if we widen it, it's better with binders bigger stone.
Right.
Get the binder on, and then, even if I can get the binder on now, then I have an idea for the height and where the road's going to be, and then I can readjust whatever I gotta readjust, you know, before they put the top. Because I've got, I still got a few driveways to cut that are asphalt, and we're going to have to. I think it's very early, so. So that's where we are now.
So, I gotta ask, is there any chance of, of addressing those crossovers that are bad? And I encourage on September to complete that.
They won't put a paper for that, it's not all handwork, I gotta try to get a road from somebody, I got a lot of patchwork.
Okay, so that's all just you?
Yeah. At some point, yeah, there's not, I mean, doing a small section's gonna be patchwork, but that's all, like, by your place, that's all going to be dug out. If it has to be dug out, then it's going to keep, it's going to. I got a lot of patchwork, I don't know when, I gotta try to get that in, still got a water to install over here. I don't know. Do what we can in.
September, October, or something?
I gotta, I think I gotta put some culverts, and we'll have finished that. We started last year what we had left, but, of course, there's gas in a lot of places too, so somewhere else must be, and, but. I just wanted, I'd like them to get what they can done that I have ready, so that way, if something happens, we don't get anything done. Something happens, they can't come back, or whatever. I'll know more probably Wednesday.
Okay.
What we're going to get done in this first round. It may only be a few weeks in between, I don't know, they got a bunch of jobs, they could go to Silver Lake, they got a bunch of jobs for themselves, they do their own paving, they ain't trying to come by. Because I think there's a few streets in Ross's Point that won't be ready. Just put all curbing, so they got, get the caddo in that, I think they got to finish.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have too much else to get the backhoe fixed. Mostly street work.
Anything else, Will?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thanks for all your hard work, and thanks to all.
Yes.
To the entire crew. I see day in and day out, my heart favorite. Correspondents, please?
The first one is correspondence to the board of trustees regarding one-one-one-six-seven Route nine. Two correspondence from county treasurer with the second quarter sales tax revenue. Violation, notice violation to Nicole Sass for forty-two Willow Street, notice violation Francis Tate for one-one-one-six-seven Route nine, violate, notice violation to Andrew Hollis for forty-six Church Street.
Okay, new business? We have a resolution of adoption of L G S dash one retention and disposition schedule. I'll read it. It resolved by the board of trustees of the Village of Champlain that the retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records L G S dash one issued pursuant to Article fifty-seven dash A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. And be it further resolved that in accordance with Article fifty-seven dash A, parentheses A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records L G S dash one, after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein, parentheses B, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods. I have a motion to accept this.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under old business? We have a board resolution from the Village of Champlain in recognition and deep appreciation of generosity and skills to modern mechanical owned by John and Heather Trombley. I'm going to read this resolution and then ask for a motion. In recognition and profound appreciation of generosity and skills by John and Heather Trombley. Whereas John and Heather have always been supportive of the Village of Champlain and have worked tirelessly to be part of local businesses. Whereas John and Heather have provided outstanding design and fabrication knowledge to construct a gangway and lifting device of our kayak launch program. And whereas John and Heather have provided materials and labor free of charge to the Village of Champlain exhibiting generosity, thoughtfulness, and altruistic behavior. And be it resolved that the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation to John and Heather Trombley for their many hours of work to the Village of Champlain towards the construction of the kayak launch project. We have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I, it's, it's hard, it's hard to, to say enough in terms of what they, they donated monetarily, but also all the time. And I just want to say from all of us that we really, really appreciate that. I don't know if you want to add a few words, Tommy, you worked with them a little bit on this.
Um, I think it was a, like you said, it was a very large monetary gift to the village, but it was the amount of time that he had to take out of his business to put this together that is remarkable, and I deeply appreciate what he did for us. It's beautiful.
Yes.
It really is, yeah, it is, it's just fabulous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We, the Board of Trustees, hereby certify that the Village of Champlain comprised of five members were present in a meeting duly and regularly called, noticed, convened, and held this tenth day of August, twenty twenty, and that the foregoing resolution was duly adopted at this meeting tonight by the affirmative vote of four members and opposed by zero members, and that the resolution has been duly recorded in the minute book and is now in full force and effect. And we'll get a nice copy of this in a frame to give to them. Thank you. All right, thank you so much, thanks for the work and coordinating all that as well.
You're welcome.
All right, the final old business item is the water line replacement scope of project. I think the most useful document of everything that was given to us is the most recent one that was updated July sixteenth, twenty twenty. And the reason I say that is because I asked Matt to give us dollar figures associated with the additions rather than only E D U. So if you look at the far left column, you'll see, for example, Main Street Willow to Mill, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, that wasn't on the original information.
Right.
So it's a little clearer what these different parts will cost. And then the other thing is I've asked, really, Mike Jellicoe needs to weigh in on the importance of the different additions. The base, of course, is Route nine from Ashline down to the river crossing, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Right, so that's the base, that's the total base project cost up at the top, the six hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
So that was from Ashline Drive.
Actually, it's the river crossing. It crossed from Cedar Street, whether it crosses the river to go to River Street?
So like to the Elm Street verge?
No.
Not, not quite.
Just before, about where Cedar Street is.
We'll call it Cedar Street then.
Okay.
So that's, that's the total base project, and we know that that's the most dire part of our problems.
How about thirty-six breaks there? In the last, plus there's probably more before that I didn't record, but.
Right.
So that should be our first.
So that's the.
That's the thorn right there.
Yeah, so I guess before we go on and look at the additions, let's talk about the two options of replace only water mains or replace water mains and service to right-of-way. I feel rather strongly that we can do the replace only water mains. Mike and I talked about it, can you explain what Anthony told you?
So, replace only water mains also includes the corp on the main, and, and obviously, your, your line is there now, they have to put a line beside the old one, so he, he's included with each one. When you, when you put that main, the new main, the ones that are on the short side, meaning the house, it's on the house side of the road, you'll be able to trim, cut the line and reattached it back to the line to go to the curb stop, which is the shut-off that's via the street. On the other side of the road, obviously, it's going to be further away, so it's not going to reach, so they included ten feet of piping to go between as well, so they're going to put a coupler and reconnect it. So the only difference between the two is that on the, on the bottom one, which is more money, they were going to put new curb stops in, which.
They were going to replace the line all the way to the curb stop?
Well, correct.
And put a new curb stop. And put a new curb stop.
Yep. So there's a big difference in price, because you've got, I think it's eight, you've got to bore into the road and go to the other side of the road, that's why the cost is, I think it was a hundred and, well, what is the difference there, a hundred?
It was about sixty, some thousand dollars.
I think I figured it out, I think it was like seventy, seven hundred dollars a piece, seventy-five hundred or something.
Yeah, that's what you said, yeah.
So the question I have is what's, how critical is it to spend the extra sixty thousand? Like, if we leave those and just tie into them, are we going to be digging them back up again, or?
Well, there's, you shouldn't be, there's no connect, there's no.
The curb stops are okay, I mean.
Well, if they're not, we change them all the time, we change the rods and stuff all the time, so if, if we're at the curb stop, I mean, worst case scenario, you freeze it, if you can't freeze it, you crimp it, freeze it, and then you just change that, you can change that section, you can just change a curb stop out, because the, the, we never dig to the main to shut the corp off, we always go to the curb stop, you know, if we got to dig a curb stop, I think that we do. So I don't think, the only one that I can see that we may want to think about, that's the one on the curb, because that one freezes every year. But I don't know if we can just get into do one?
Well, that's a, a question we got.
Okay, well, then it sounds like we need to address that one for sure, if that one freezes every year.
Last year didn't, it was first time in like, four years.
Is it right here at the curb? I thought it was the one down by the, the old driver for the St. Mary's.
Yeah, the one right on the, the first place, went up the hill on the curb.
Oh, okay.
And it's not, it's not deep enough. So usually, once it freezes, I can, I can thaw that one, once I thawed, I just have to trickle water, have her trickle her water till I tell her in the spring to stop. This year was the first year that we didn't have to in quite a few years.
Okay.
So how does the board feel about option, I'm going to call it option one, the one on the top half of the paper, versus option two?
I, based on this discussion, I think I'm fine with it.
With option one?
Yeah, in other words, only what water means.
Right, okay.
That's what you're referring to, right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, if it's not critical that we replace all the curb stops.
And then the curb stops, we, we do them.
Okay. Then I think it's, it's worth saving and maybe we can get, and maybe we can do an additional instead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I jotted that down, yeah. All right. So just looking at replace only water mains, we need to look at, these don't have to be final decisions, but the engineers do want a sense of which way we're going here. We need to look at these additional areas, Willow to Mill, Cedar, Elm, Ashline to South, and Willow to Willow. And see which ones we think we want to include in this project. Mike and I talked a little bit, and the Elm Street is forty-four thousand, not a lot, and it's been a major problem.
That's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot stretch.
So I would recommend that Elm Street section. But again, that's just my opinion and looking for everyone's input. Yeah.
So that one's more of an issue than the Willow to Mill?
Well, Willow to Mill, that was originally going to be done because there's still some A C line there, and we were supposed to get rid of the A C line. But I think that, that right there was, I, I shared it out tonight and I forgot what it was. But there's, there's a valve just going up the hill, and I believe it's ductal from that valve up. Because we dug up above that, we had breaks. And I think it was only ninety feet.
Ninety feet?
I think they could do ninety feet there and not do, you know, go from Mill all the way up. Everything on state Route nine is, and that would be expensive. Well, this here comes, figures out, this is thirteen-hundred-and-fifty feet. It's like five-hundred-and-ten dollars a foot is what it goes out to.
Right.
Elm Street's like a hundred-and-seventy-six dollars a foot.
Right.
When you look at the footage, just because of state road and the utilities you have, the gas supply, or sidewalk, flagging, you're going to make so much adjustments. We haven't had, we, the section that we, we broke in the A C line by Mill Street, that's already been removed. We, when they did the river crossing, the ductal's been rerouted up the side of Mill Street to that hydrant, and that's what was connected back to the A C. We haven't had any breaks down below there. But that was originally supposed to be changed because it was an A C pipe. We were trying to get, eliminate all the A C and made it in place and really ductal. I'm guessing that first valve is where it starts. I can't say that for sure. Pretty sure. We can try to trace it, you know, and follow continuity, but it ends. That's the trouble. We used to have them freeze when I first started because it was A C pipe. We tried with a portable welder. Well, of course, it's not going to work. I didn't know it was A C pipe. But we found out, can't thaw it, well, that's why. Electricity doesn't look good, but. Like I say, that one.
So that one might actually only be about ninety feet.
Yeah.
Which is another thing I could ask Matt about.
Make an adjustment for that.
Oh, recalculation, right?
So in other words, make an adjustment for that additional, instead of Willow to Mill, it would be just that ninety feet.
That's what I'm guessing. I mean, you really don't know until you. I guess if you get on that valve and try to trace it, that would be the only way to tell, knowing for sure if that's where it ends, because it wouldn't have the continuity. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty confident that's where it ends, where the A C ends. I mean, obviously, without digging down, you really don't know, and you can't just dig it down because that one's on the roadside of the curb. It's on the street.
So how about the Main Street, Ashline to South? Hasn't been a problem as well?
Well. The line hasn't been a problem. The problem's been the valves. I haven't had any, I've had, I haven't had any breaks. I've had one break, I should say, in that stretch. We fixed it. But we have no valves. We've got one valve that feeds Ashline to shut Ashline off. There's no main valves on the main line. We need to add valves. If we go to Ashline, we can add valves. So we can isolate this section, because right now, I can't, I have to go all the way to South Street, and South Street valve doesn't close tight. So originally, we're going to go, try to get it all the way to South Street. But I think we could get away, say this, change myself. We haven't had any issues really. We've had one issue between Ashline and South, but we took care of it. Obviously, if we can get enough grant money, we should change everything to change. But if it's, well, we can't get funding, I'd say the major ones is this one here and.
Is that what we're trying to determine, or am I misunderstanding?
We're trying to determine what we're going to put into the packet to request the grant and more money.
Right. So if we don't request all of it, then we certainly are not ever going to get all of it.
Well, we wouldn't get it on this round for this project, right?
Right.
But I, I'm very reluctant to go with a one million, five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, which is about the total of the whole thing. So I'm looking for places where we could chop parts of it to get it down to something that's a little more reasonable with the hope that we get that WEA grant. I don't think we have much of a chance of the C D V G grant, but I'm very hopeful that we could get the WEA grant. So it looks like we know this, this area is a given, and we absolutely have to do something about this road right now.
Yeah.
And Elm Street, I think, is, is definite. Cedar is a loop.
Cedar is a complete a loop. We haven't had any breaks because there's no line there. I mean, we could get by without that one. Obviously, it's better if you don't, if you can move the water around the loop and not be a dead end, but that's not an absolute necessity.
Why don't you talk about the Willow to Willow?
Willow to Willow, I have, I have had, I've had, well, break on both, near both intersections of Willow to Willow.
Right.
The, the only issue we have where it comes off from, where it comes from our plant and crosses the road, we've got a valve, we can send it either way. If something happens, it breaks on the north side of that valve, the only way to get it to either tank is we have to send it through Willow Street. Willow Street's only a six-inch line. If we have a break between Willow and Locust or the rail bed further up, we can't send any water. Because we can't send it through the bolt, because they're all directional, and only wood, it can't come out. So that's a criticals. We've got, we've only got one, we've got one stretch there from where it comes out, really from the end of Willow to either Locust or the rail bed. Because at least if we could get it to Locust, we could send it around the other way back to the tanks. But that stretch there is, we've been lucky.
Well, it sounds, I mean, that one's pretty critical.
We, we've been lucky.
And, and you'd have the additional valves in that, in that to divert your water.
To send it. Either way, it's still going to have to go through a six inch if it goes through Willow. Because Willow's only a six-inch line, but it's better to put it through a six-inch line than.
Right. So everybody's clear, Willow to Willow is all in the state anyway. It's all.
It's all in the state. Well, I've only had, and I've only had, I've had one break in the middle, and I've had one intersection on both ends. The, the, the south end was a valve, and the upper end, we had one on the end of Willow near New Ecellies, and that was a, that was a break in the line. And that line is, the gas main is on top, this far over it, on top of it. Put the gas right on top of the water there.
So in theory, if we replace that line, we're not going to have to worry about diverting it to a six-inch line?
Well. Correct.
In theory.
In theory. It'll be new, and you can keep it at least, get it at least to Willow. Now, if we have any issues from Willow to Locust or to up further, that's going to be a different, you know, we still got to get it to, we still got to get it up a little further, but in theory, yes.
Okay.
And it's weird because where it crosses, from the crossing up, from the crossing down is not really, I mean, if the crossing up is good, you don't really need to do the downhill side, but how do you divide halfway, you almost have to go through the streets?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, we could say from that valve, it was crossing up, change it, leave, leave the other part, so we can still loop it around in the meantime, but I don't know highly, how you divide that up, because you're going to put a whole new line. You can't just. It's, it's hard to cut in. It's hard to cut in because you have to be able to, the new line you're putting in, the only I can see of doing it is you put a line in, you cut the, you cut the old line and you cap it. And you put a jumper, you put a valve on, you put a jumper from the line that's still active onto the old line to still feed those people, and then you got to run your new line and tie everything back in, because you have to pressure test, you have to superfluent, and you got to supply those people with water in the meantime. So it's not, it's not as easy as just putting a line and hooking them up. That's the, that's the tricky part. So, uh, Willow, it's an expensive, it's an expensive, I mean, I don't, I forgot if I mentioned it was an L, but it's expensive, but a lot of that's because it's on the state road.
Yeah.
Well, that, that because of the difficulties in taking that line out and keeping water flowing.
Well, no matter where you are, it's always going to be the same.
What's your best recommendation, Mike?
Tell them to do Willow to Willow?
Yeah, if it can be, if it can be, if it's feasible to be done, I think number three would be Willow to Willow.
So Elm and Willow to Willow?
Yes.
And then if we can get the short, Willow to Mill, that, that short.
That'd be four, and then the last one would be Cedar, obviously, if you wanted to divide it by order of all of them.
Wait, where are you putting Ashline to South? Are you putting that as?
I, I didn't, I didn't put, let's skip that one. I would say that's, that's going to be four.
Can you, can you prioritize, so it's one more time for you, so I can make sure I have that right?
So one, five, six, two, four, three.
One, five, six. Wait, one, five, six, what?
Two, four, three.
Oh, are you counting?
I'm counting down.
Just the additions.
Willow to Mill?
Just the additions.
Oh.
Because we know we're going to do, we know we have to do Main Street.
Okay, that was number one.
Okay, gotcha.
Number two was Elm to Street. Number three was Willow to Willow. Number four was Ashline to South. Five was Willow to Mill. And then six would have been Cedar.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So does the board feel comfortable with, with adding the Elm Street and the Willow to Willow onto this six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand base? Do you feel like you want to add another one? I mean, the next one, Mike said, was Ashline to South, and that's a hundred and eighty-nine.
Which one was your top priority?
Number one.
Number one.
Ashline to River Crossing.
Okay. I'm, I'm like, I'm looking at this, I've not even seen that one in the top, okay.
Then two.
That, that one's a six.
Two is Elm Street. Three is Willow to Willow. Four is Ashline to South, and five would be Willow to Mill.
And that Willow to Bill, I think, I don't know if we got to change anything, I mean, if we could, we would know, we're in good shape, but the biggest thing with that was changing that A C pipe, because it's, it's, it's just cement, it's more fragile than the ductal. Above that, I haven't had any, I haven't had any to get to the corner of Willie, I hadn't had any breaks. I only did one in the corner of Willow. But, um, that's, that was, should have been done already when this project was done.
I know.
And they didn't do it.
I know, they didn't do it.
But we'll come back, because it was hard. We'll come back, and it didn't happen.
Yeah.
I actually think we're going to do an alternate.
Was it an alternate or was it included?
I think they might do an alternate when they did it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so let me recap this, make sure I'm understanding, but if we're all on the same page here. So we all agree that number one is the Ashline to River Crossing? And that's the base, that's the base project? And then the other two, I think you're saying to include are Elm Street and Willow to Willow?
Yes.
And then, do you also want me to talk to Matt about shortening that Willow to Mill or not? Is that, is that A C pipe really essential to get that out of there?
I could talk to the health department. I know that was part of the, when we did our upgrades, is to get rid of the, abandon the A C and change. Like, we can see, I can try to trace it too and see what I got for plonality, you know, if I get continuity uphill, but I don't get it downward, then we're at ninety-nine percent sure that it's, that's where it ends from that valve.
I mean, I do, I think it's pretty critical to do it.
It sounds like it. I think as soon as you contact the health department.
We've had breaks before, but they were closer down the hill. You know, they were ninety feet, eighty feet down the hill.
Yeah.
And we had that ridge crossing that was gone. And I'm sure with that coal, it falls that cement pipe up, and I think that's where we had those breaks before.
Oh, okay.
And by Mill Street, because it's just a coal, we, we travel right through it.
Yeah.
But since we've abandoned that and went to ductal up that, I actually haven't had any, we haven't had any breaks there. Because you are values in that, it's terrible.
So are, are we comfortable with leaving out the Cedar Street? Excuse me.
That was, that was just to make a loop.
That was just a loop. I, I, yeah, I understand it. And then the Ashline to South, we're comfortable with leaving that out?
The worst case scenario, we have to add a valve of above, but the thing is, if they go to Ashline, we can have an add a valve on both sides.
Yeah.
From the crossing, we can shut Ashline off and get them to add a valve on both sides. If they can cut in a valve on the other side, then we have a valve to send it one
Okay.
way or the other way.
Okay.
That's our biggest, and even if they can't, we still have a valve on Ashline, and we'll have a valve on this side of, of the intersection, so we can still shut the water coming this way. Because right now, I can't shut the water completely from South Street.
Right, okay.
I have to shut like four other valves by trying to isolate that intersection.
Okay. Other comments from the board?
Well, I guess we're. I guess it's too bad the scope couldn't include them all and just remove what's not affordable afterwards and find out what we're getting, because.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can, I can ask about that, but. Yeah, I, I'm not really sure how the WEA grant works.
And is, is it possible to, to go ahead and put it into total scope? And if we don't, we don't need enough funding, then we start scrapping some additional instead of pulling them up front, and we don't know? That's just my thought.
I just don't know if we got it all and we ended up with this huge annual debt service that we really, really want to do that.
Well, other than the Cedar Street one, I think they're all, they're all worthy. They all need to be done.
Well, not that I want to throw a wrench in it, but. From border of Ashline. Up towards on South Street, I've had six breaks. The four northern tier way that, I've had like four by Neves, and I had two additional lines.
Oh, on South?
Yeah.
On South?
Which is not even on this.
Yeah, you didn't even include that on this, huh?
That's starting to get about a stretch too, and I don't know. I don't know. Eventually, we may end up having to do some of that, but. Same deal, we had one here, we also had one there, so it's starting to become a.
So is this my thought? If not, then.
I'm just, I guess just get nervous, Tom, thinking of gigantic loan that we have to take out.
Janet, if you, if you applaud, if you say this is what we're looking at doing, and you apply, is there any way the village can say, well, if they don't get it, or they want to lessen it, is there any way they can say?
Reduce it after you submit your application?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking.
You know, try, try for it.
That's what I'm asking.
Is it, can it be reduced, or does it have to be for the whole?
I think not, but I will ask. I'll ask. But I think what, what you apply for, and if you get it, that's what you, that's what But I think what, what you apply for, and if you get it, that's what you, that's what you're supposed to use. You don't start saying, okay, we're not gonna take that much. We decide we're only gonna do this much.
Well, and if that's the case, they do it by percentage probably, so you'd get less.
Right.
But I don't know how that.
I think the application is written specifically for all of the projects that you intend to do.
We're attending.
And, and borrow the money and get the grant money. And it'd be an EFC loan, and it's over thirty years, well beyond my lifetime. So I, I don't know. It just makes me a little nervous. It's a big commitment.
And the increased cost for EBU, that is, is that quarterly amount looking at, or what is that? Cause that's not clear either. It was an annual, I believe it's annual, right?
That's annual, yeah. That's, that's annual, and of course, that's estimated. As we all know, with costs.
We recall the big water loan that, that we have. Recall the big water loan that we have.
Yeah.
And we were able to pay, um, we started paying, extra payments in order to get it.
Yeah.
After we were financed.
But again, we've also got that huge payment that we're making on the project we've got going on right now.
That's right.
So this would be an added.
And we would raise, we'd, we'd raise water rates and.
This, this one would be, if this is being done by EBU's, we're gonna, it would be a separate charge. It would be done through water rates, am I right?
No, it can be done through water rates.
It would be a lot, we do that.
I believe so. That's another question I could ask, but I believe it can be done through increased water rates.
Okay, cause it's, I don't know, but it's not enormous. Not at all.
Well, let me, I, I will ask the question about if we got it, or do we have to spend that maximum amount, or could we carry it back if we wanted to? That's the question, right?
Yes.
That's the question?
Yeah, cause most of the time, it's a percentage towards it.
Yeah. Okay. I'll send, I'll send you all that information when I get it.
Actually, we look at it and say, well, if you can do that, you can really go and beat it, you know? But it's hard to, listen, you asked the question, you know.
So.
It's pretty close to nine-hundred thousand, I think, that we're looking at, right?
Yeah, that's, it's well above that, probably a little above nine-hundred thousand.
I just quickly rounded things.
And, and you're saying, and just choosing two of the additional, right? Elm Street?
Yeah, because I don't know what we change on that Willow to Mill with that shortened distance.
Right. Right, so in doing that, that annual, if you get the EFC loan with the WEA grant, that annual goes from thirty-nine dollars EBU down to twenty-five. In theory.
In theory.
I've had that.
Yes, I'm glad you did. I mean, these are.
Yeah, so it's, it turns out fourteen dollars EBU annual.
All right, well, I'll get the answers to these questions. And I'll send you all an email, so you know where we are.
Okay.
Matt and Anthony, I believe, are coming to the September meeting. But I, I will let him know how our discussion went. And I'll just keep you informed. I think that's all we have to discuss on it at this point, unless anyone has some other questions or comments.
I guess, you know, a thing I add, and Mike probably agree with that, if you think about the project, the horrible project we just went through, we applied for this, and then we ended up doing this, and that's why we're here.
I know.
So that's why I think that could be done.
But those, my understanding was those were all, all, always listed as alternates. And they were never promised. They were all, if we have the money. Rather than being put in the real project.
Okay, that is true.
And I, I, I think that's how it works.
That might be the difference.
I think it's how it works, but I'm not positive. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
It's probably, probably the fluff that was on there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cause the Ashline, you know, they paid for it.
We paid for the Ashline, right, yeah.
The Ashline move to get that.
That's right.
Which is a good thing, because many, many times, it's when they, these guys want to have the water every time they have a issue out here. Who's gonna feed it from the other end?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, look at this payment, it's only like eleven thousand, twelve thousand, whatever, in our last water project, it was thirty-five thousand.
But we're really hoping on getting that WEA grant, too. So if, if we don't get that, I don't know. That's all I have. Anyone else have any old business? Motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
I thought Nikki did it.
Bye. Close, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.